Good evening, everyone. Tonight is Wednesday, June 26, 2024. It is 6:04 PM. And I would like to call to order the Columbus City Council meeting. Please join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The first order of business will be the adoption of the agenda. And I'll make the motion to pull C5. I'm sorry. I'll make the motion to pull C5 from the presentation reports and adopt the remainder of the agenda for the tonight, the 26th, 2024 City Council meeting. Is there a second?
It's Rob. I'll second.
Any questions or discussion? I'll call for the vote.
Ron, aye.
Sue, aye.
Janet, aye.
Rob, aye.
Jesse, aye. Next item is a consent agenda. Janet?
So I would move to remove item number one, the approval of the June 12, 2024, City Council meeting minutes as they're being revised. And so I will, and then to approve the bill payments as attached on the June 12 payment summary.
Is there a second?
This is Sue. I'll second.
All of a question, why are we pulling that?
Because there are significant edits that are in the process of being done.
That makes sense. I'll call for the vote.
Ron, aye.
Sue, aye.
Janet, aye.
Rob, aye.
And Jesse, aye. Public open forum. Is there anyone online or in the audience who would like to speak tonight? Moving right along. Tonight, Lieutenant Jessica Slavik is with us from the Anoka County Sheriff's Department. She's here to make her report. Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers.
Is your mic working?
Oh, pull that way up, right up to your, right up. Nope, closer.
I don't think it's working.
Let me try this one real quick if I have to scoot over.
Something's unplugged down on the floor there.
Testing. Oh, that one's better. Yep.
I'll just scoot over real quick. Hold on one second. All right. Well, thank you very much, Mayor. Good evening, Mayor, Councilmembers. As Jesse said, my name's Jessica Slavik. I am a lieutenant with the Criminal Investigation Division at the Sheriff's Office. And it's also my honor to be the liaison with the City of Columbus. It sounds like moving forward, instead of just coming yearly for Meet the Deputy Day Night, we're going to be doing quarterly reports. So I appreciate that opportunity, and I think that will be great for enhancing communication and maintaining our already well-established relationship. So yeah, it's been since Valentine's Day, since I was out here last. And I've prepared a little bit of a report to cover some of the statistics for the last few months. And then I also wanted to cover some reports that I thought were interesting, that the city should be aware of. Starting out with some statistics, this last month of May, we ended with a total of 198 calls for service. This is an increase from February, March, and April. Each one of those months had 184 or 185 calls. So very consistent those three months, and now the increase here in the spring. Deputies wrote a total of three theft reports, handled one assault, and made three felony-level arrests and one misdemeanor arrest in the month of May. A total of two warrant arrests were made in Columbus, and deputies' traffic enforcement efforts resulted in the issuance of 18 citations last month. Before we get into some recent calls for service, I did want to talk about a motor vehicle fatality that happened on December 23, 2023, on Lake Drive. I know there was a request earlier for that, but with that being an open investigation, we have to wait until the Minnesota State Patrol finishes their reconstruction. We get all the reports from our crime scene unit and the Criminal Investigation Division before we make a closing and determine what the actual disposition on that case is going to be. So I'm going to give a quick update on that. But essentially, what happened was on December 23, at 1:48 PM, deputies were called to a motor vehicle crash on Lake Drive near 141st Avenue. It appeared that a 32-year-old female, who was later identified as Sarah Rajanen of Lino Lakes, was pronounced deceased at the scene. The crash was investigated by the Anoka County Sheriff's Office and the Minnesota State Patrol. The final reports, as I said, were completed last month, and it was determined that the 32-year-old female was traveling northbound on Lake Drive in a Toyota RAV4. She left the northbound lane and entered the southbound lane, accelerating in what looked to be an attempt to pass the vehicles in front of her. She then crashed head-on with a Chevy 12 Blazer, driven by a 22-year-old male who was traveling southbound. He ended up sustaining multiple injuries, but did survive the crash. So ultimately, the crash was contributed to the RAV4 entering the southbound lane of traffic. And also, an additional contribution was that her blood alcohol concentration level was over three times the legal limit.
Oh, boy.
So unfortunate ending to that, but nonetheless, those are always very tragic when they happen. So I wanted to share the final details on that. Any questions, though, on the stats I gave or anything else before I move into a few other calls for service in the last month?
Well, I was just curious on the, so we had an increase in calls. Is that typical for springtime?
It is. And when I was looking at the actual stats that we pull, one of the increases I saw were in property damage and personal injury accidents. And last, in April, there were only four property damage accidents. May, there were 12. And I looked, and they're happening everywhere, whether it's Broadway and Potomac, Lake Drive, and the parking lot of Love's Truck Station. There's really not an actual isolated area. One of the personal injury accidents that I thought was interesting, actually wasn't in May, it was just this last week when we had all the rain. But there was another head-on collision, and the driver, who left her lane of traffic, admitted to driving too fast for the weather conditions. She started hydroplaning, and that's what ended up shifting her into the opposing lane of traffic. And unfortunately, a head-on collision, but nobody was severely injured in that crash, thankfully.
Oh, good.
That's just how quick that happens in weather conditions and the need to drive with due caution and due care. She was issued a citation for, even though there's a posted speed limit, when there are severe weather conditions, you are required to drive with due care and reduce your speed to prevent accidents from happening. Okay, thank you. Yes.
I have a quick question. So I've been to two open houses now that Anoka County Transportation has done about the proposed construction that, or upgrade that they're going to do to Lake Drive. Do they contact, or do they involve your department in that? Because I feel like, you know, the potential for head-on collisions on that road is great, and people travel it typically above the posted speed regardless of what the weather is like. So I'm just curious whether or not you guys get to weigh in on that or not.
I know I'm personally not a part of those meetings, but I can ask who is and see if there's any updates. Because I believe they're also, is it County Highway that's in charge of potentially the new substation that's being built on Lex and 197th? And I don't know anything about that either. So let me reach out and find out.
I mean, I've seen, I've seen what they're proposing, and I know that there's a, some attention to cost. So I think the latest, correct me if I'm wrong, wasn't it having the suicide lane? Which I just think aptly named. It's just such a bad idea on that road.
I'm assuming our Public Safety Committee is involved in those meetings, but let me just check because
Yeah, because I
weigh in on that would be beneficial.
That would be really good, because you guys see it firsthand, so.
Absolutely. Thank you for that.
So I just, this, Rob, just had a question on, you said 198 service calls. What, do you know, like, what percentage of that is would be when we have someone on staff, or are they having to bring someone over from Anoka to cover some of those calls?
I could do an actual breakdown to find out whether that's between your coverage period. But even if it's not, you still get a response from either the countywide vehicle that's working the east side of the county that day. Otherwise, East Bethel, Lynnwood, and Ham Lake will both back to the City of Columbus.
Okay. Yeah, just curious. Thank you.
Any other questions?
How many of those calls can you determine were medicals?
In the month of May, there was 18. April 16, March 19, February 24, and January 26. So a total of 103. Last year to this date, there was 89. So a slight increase in medicals.
Thank you.
You're welcome. All right. Just a couple other notable calls that our deputies handled this past month. Deputy Isaac Thompson, who's one of the Columbus deputies, was called to running ACES on a male who had previously been trespassed from the location. He returned, was located, arrested, and transported to jail for trespassing. And then Deputy Madsen, he was working the morning, and at 9:40, he stopped a vehicle that was headed eastbound on Lake Drive at the bridge over Interstate 35. He stopped the vehicle for a missing brake light. The driver was identified as a 45-year-old female from Columbus, who had a gross misdemeanor warrant out of Anoka County and a misdemeanor warrant out of Ramsey County. So that traffic enforcement led into an arrest. And then on, I don't have the date on this one, I'm sorry. This was just a couple weeks ago. But we got a call from Coon Lake, in which Deputy William Jacobson was dispatched specifically to the boat launch located at 5451 Lexington Avenue. On the report of a boat that was intentionally driving over herds of Canadian geese on the lake. Deputy Jacobson interviewed several of the witnesses who were on scene, and they indicated that the boat was heading towards this pack of geese approximately 50 feet from the dock at the boat launch, and driving between 30 to 40 miles an hour, intentionally trying to run the geese over. The first attempt, the pack split. So then the boater decided to turn around, and he went right for that pack of geese. A second time, all the witnesses said it was very clear that this action was very intentional. Later on, one of the witnesses found a beheaded goose in the water, and that, that individual collected the goose, put it in a bag, that was later turned over to the Minnesota DNR, Officer Tony Salzer, who was in this area, I see him allowed out at Carlos Avery. But he collected the goose as evidence. The witnesses gave a very good description of the boat and the driver of the boat. Deputy Abler launched the Sheriff's Office boat, went into the lake. The suspect boat and the driver were located, and he was given a citation for chasing wildlife with the boat. And I believe that is a mandatory appearance, so he will have to go in front of a judge. That's not something he can pay with a fine. So I found that to be a little horrific to be doing.
A good investigative work.
Right? Especially enjoying our beautiful lakes to be out there raising that kind of havoc. But hats off to the deputies for getting the boat in the water and looking, looking into who that was.
Yep.
So, any other questions? Something I wanted to propose, I think, Mr. Davis, we were talking not long ago with the workshops, were you still interested in having an Ellis training? Which is helping with emergency situations that can take place in the workplace. I want to say it stands for Alert, Lockdown, Inform, Center, and the E is Evacuate. And we have certified instructors that could come and present that training.
Very good. And just as an update, too, I have requested that Jessica appear before us quarterly. I think these updates are very timely, and it's a good interaction that we have with their Sheriff's Department, who I think does a fantastic job for us.
Thank you, Mr. Davis. I appreciate that.
And one question I have for Jessica is that I had a conversation with the city clerk for Lynnwood today, and she was wanting to know if there was any possibility of us discussing with them some, going in for a JPA for some law enforcement contract services. You know, I told her that we would discuss that as a council at some point and get back to you, and if we do that, we'd like to have you as a part of that discussion.
Absolutely. Let me know.
I've got a question. We were, a while back, we were talking about an active shooter or whatever, whatever became of that.
So that would be the Ellis training.
Yeah. Oh, okay.
So let's get that on the schedule for one of the workshops. I think that would be beneficial.
Yeah. So that was the deal with the human, I mean, what was that?
Homeland Security, we did an active shooter training with that mic.
But we had one, was that if something happened inside this facility?
It was more general than that.
It was more general.
Yeah. General.
Yep.
So I think it'd be great to have you do that for us.
And they could sit and do some safety planning and stuff, too, with you. Okay, we'll get that scheduled. All right. Well, that's all I have prepared. If anybody has any other questions?
You're still on for Fall Fest, right?
Yes, I am. Yep.
Yay. Thank you.
Yes, of course.
Thank you very much.
Yep. Thanks.
Thank you, Jessica.
All right. Well, thank you very much. Have a wonderful evening.
Thank you.
You, too.
Our next item is number three, under letter C, the May 2024 Financial Report. Jack?
In, in your packet, there's a financial report where we stand to May 30 of this year in relation to our budget categories and our expenditures in those categories. We're currently running a little ahead in the expenditures categories, but that's normal for this time of year, because we've had some occurring expenses that are only one-time payments. So I think we're still in very good shape. If anybody has any questions about any of those categories, the expenses or where we stand, I'm open for any questions.
Well, this is Sue. I just have a question about the one that's at 419% emergency management. I'm sure it's a matter of, it was in a different fund or something?
Before, the, that one is, in the past, all of our ARPA funds had been deposited in this, and we had to pay the county about $16,000 to settle up and finish that out. So that's why that shows up in that emergency services category.
Okay. I think that was the only one I had a question on.
And I think I raised the question with you yesterday, Jack, and I don't know if you've had a chance to follow up with Anoka County on that other one, which I'm trying to find, the one that I thought might have to do with the LRIP.
We, we have, and we're still in the process of that, and I talked to Jim about that, too. And apparently, from what we found out so far, we are eligible for a $300,000 reimbursement. Janet asked a question about that being part of the LRIP grant program, and it was, but this was an extra cost that MINDOT had agreed to participate in. The LRIP funds, which you've reallocated to North Freeway, West Freeway Drive, were part of that, but they weren't part of this, so.
Okay.
So we're in the process of contacting MINDOT now to start the application for that reimbursement of the $300,000. It would pay out of this account and charged to the Public Works account. Janet, I got a question. Did that ever get settled about Companion Animal Control?
Yeah, actually, it did. So Cheryl came by yesterday when we were meeting, and it's just, it's more of a coding error on our part. The way that, that the animal control person has put on the invoice, it says impound, it just means that the animal was impounded, but they're not charging us for the impound fee. So right now, the animal is not, or I'm sorry, the owner is not charged for the impounding. And what we need to do is figure out how to go back and collect the fees that we're paying, the mileage and the, the call fee that she generates to us. So all, all of those bills to us are appropriate, but we, now we need to turn around and charge that back to the person whose dog was running around. And we don't have a process for that right now. We have to create one.
That's what we're going to be working with. In their contract with Northwoods Humane Society, it says that the animal, if you pick the animal up, the owner will pay for the cost. So we'll have a meeting with them to determine how they're collecting that money, if they're collecting it at all, to see what's going to happen. We were told that Companion Animal Control, though, is building a shelter in
Was it Old Grove?
No, it's Bayport. So they will have their own shelter, so we'll be able to contract directly with them to make sure if a dog is picked up or an animal's picked up, that the owner has to pay for that pickup and kenneling cost, and we won't be liable for it. But that, that's something that won't happen until next year. In the meantime, we'll be working with Northwoods Humane Society to figure out what the deal is with the pickup cost on what we're doing now.
But, but what I, what I thought I understood Cheryl to say was, there's, there is a separate contract with Northwoods to provide impound services, but they're not charging for it. So when we saw the bills, it said impound. I was assuming that was the impound fee that, that should have been paid when the animal was picked up. What it is, is the, is the fee that the animal control person is charging us for responding to the call and then the mileage. So those are appropriate fees for her to charge the city. We've had so few in the past, so few animals that have picked up. I think Elizabeth just didn't think it was worth setting up a process for it, but this year, for whatever reason, seems to be a big increase. So we need, we need to get the information so we can go back and charge it to the owner, collect it from the owner. I don't know how we're going to do that, but, because they already have their dog back, so there's not
But will that include a way for her to collect it, anybody to collect it before they take home their pet?
I don't know how you do that, because the contract is between us and her. And so, you know, we're, we're guaranteeing her that she's going to get paid for responding to these calls and picking this animal up and bringing it somewhere. So I don't know that it's her responsibility to try to pick that up, it's our responsibility to try to recoup that cost. We just haven't spent any time thinking about how to do that.
And, and since we're dealing with two different entities, it makes that a little bit more challenging. When we get it down to hopefully one entity next year, it'll make that a whole lot easier to set that process up.
I, I think it'll still be, I think it might still be problematic, because any impound facility is not going to want to keep the animal for longer. I mean, they're not going to say, well, we're just going to keep it until you pace the city of Columbus, right? Because they're all strapped for space, so.
And there, there's a five-day hold, anything after five days, then that animal becomes the property of the impound facility. So then they rescue it out. So if the, if the animal's not picked up, then we don't have any way of collecting after that period. So
Well, I mean, I'm assuming you can send an invoice to them, and probably the majority of the people are going to pay it. And I, I don't know what the process would be. I don't know, you can tack it onto their property tax, right? I, I don't know. I don't know. We'll have to have the attorneys advise us on what we can legally do.
In, in, in my previous experience, collecting on animal control impound cost is very difficult unless that fee is paid when the animal's picked up and is contingent on them having the animal returned to them. So, you know, we may, we may be able to find the owner. Of course, the, what, the owner, if the owner doesn't live in Columbus, there's no way, if they refuse to pay, unless we submit it to a collection agency, and that's the only other option we have.
Yeah.
But it, it is a challenge, and one other thing to note, too, is the city is not obligated to provide animal control services. However, I think it's one that's necessary. I'm surprised that you haven't had more issues than you've had. In my prior place, we probably averaged 20 to 25 a year, including maybe eight to 10 dog bites, which we had to have dangerous or potentially dangerous dog hearings. So what we've had here is very mild. So let's just hope this month of May was an anomaly, and it doesn't repeat itself in June.
Anybody else? Number four, absentee ballot board appointments. Jack?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The City of Columbus is designated as a location for in-person absentee voting for Columbus residents for the August 13, 2024 county and state primary election. Absentee voting will take place at Columbus City Hall. Pursuant to State Statute 203B 121, the Anoka County Board of Commissioners has established an absentee ballot board. Resolution 2014-2023, this is a county resolution, establishes that board and designates the persons authorized to issue ballots as members of the Anoka County Absentee Ballot Board for the purpose of accepting, rejecting, and processing absentee ballots. Members of the absentee ballot board serving at the City of Columbus will convene for the following dates and times for the purpose of accepting and rejecting absentee ballots: Monday through Friday, June 28 through August 9, Saturday, August 10, Monday, August 12, and Tuesday, August 13. We have to designate these persons from the City of Columbus. In the City of Columbus, the recommendations are for absentee ballot board are Jack Davis, City Clerk, Lori Spangler, Deputy Clerk, Carissa Kranz, Permit Coordinator, Eleanor Hahn, Planning and Zoning Technician, Mary Tomlin, Accounting Assistant, and Head Election Judge Jennifer Hill. We would ask that the City Council appoint these persons as the absentee ballot board for the City of Columbus for the Anoka County Election Commission.
Excuse me. I'll make the motion to approve the absentee ballot board appointments as presented in the agenda, item C, point two. Is there a second?
This is Janet, I second.
Any other questions or discussion? I'll call for the vote.
Ron, aye.
Sue, aye.
Janet, aye.
Rob, aye.
And Jesse, aye. Item number six, we're skipping, or we're deleting item number five. I guess they have pulled their request to change their roof plan, so that's off the table for tonight. And item number six is to set the agenda for the July 2, 2024 workshop meeting. Jack, do you want to take that one?
Thank you, Jesse. As we discussed earlier in our workshop meeting, there is one item that is not ready for presentation, that's in your packet for the July 2 meeting, and that's the review and discussion of the proposed changes to Chapter 14, Public Health, Wells, Sewers, and Utilities. So I would recommend that we delete this item as a proposed agenda item for our work session, and add two other items to that. One would be a final proposal from the Anoka County Highway Department for the Lake Drive Project. They have some answers for some questions that people ask at the open house. They'd like to come here and present them. That should take about no more than 30 minutes. And then to continue with our 2025 budget report and discussion, and then add the continuation of our workshop meeting we had prior to this meeting, the organizational transition, audits, recommendations, and actions of summary and findings. Those are the three items that I would recommend for the workshop agenda.
So I'll make the motion to approve the July 2, 2024 City Council Workshop Meeting agenda as presented by the city administrator. Is there a second?
It's Rob. I'll second.
Any other questions? If not, I'll call for the vote.
Ron, aye.
Sue, aye.
Janet, aye.
Rob, aye.
And Jesse, aye. Onto our consultant reports, city engineer.
Kevin is not here tonight, so he didn't have any reports, so we have no report from
City Attorney Report.
Good evening. Megan Rogers, on behalf of the City Attorney's Office. A very quick report, we do now have the guide that was published by the, by the Office of Cannabis Management with recommendations with regards to local ordinances for cannabis. The staff has that, and your planning team will be looking at that in terms of any adoptions or changes. In terms of any adoptions or changes you might like to make to your zoning ordinance with this in mind. It was drafted in partnership with the Public Health Law Center at Mitchell-Hamlin Law School. So there are a number of draft ordinances that accompany this packet that include a variety of choices in terms of, you know, addressing health impacts of cannabis use and things along those lines as well. So that finally has come in. On the cannabis side, the, the hiring and the licensing process began this week for social equity candidates. That's part of the vetting process for issuing the cultivation licenses. That began this week. It will close on July 24th, and initial licenses will begin to be issued on August 12th. And as a reminder, you have a moratorium in place, so no cultivation permits can be issued for Columbus until after January 1. And that's the update from our office. If you have any questions, we're always around. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor and City Council Members Report. Ron?
I have nothing.
This is Sue. I have nothing.
I don't have anything either.
I'm good. And I have nothing except I saw that accident Jessica was talking about. It was right by my house. And there's a little dip in the road, and she must have been going too quick, and it was just pouring buckets. And I talked to the fire chief, and he said if she had been over four inches and the other guy had been four inches over, they went and walked away. They ripped the doors off. They ripped the wheels off. They ripped the tires off. He said it was just something. And they shut down 23 from east of my place, just about to my driveway. Everybody had to turn around, and so it was quite excellent, so.
It was a couple Tuesdays ago, right? It was a couple Tuesdays ago, two weeks ago?
Yeah, oh, like last Wednesday after the meeting or something. So anyway, if it's raining cats and dogs, slow down. So, Public Works, Jim, Planning Commission?
There wasn't one.
Public Works?
Mr. Mayor and Council, I just got a couple little things, nothing major. Slight update on the sign. I was able to get somebody out here today. We need to order some parts. There's a potential board that's bad in there and a power supply. So we're going to work through that. Should have parts in the next week or two. So we should be back and running on that. Couple of incidents in the park. We had a tree fall down and land on our new fence. So I'm working with Century Fence to get a price on that repair. We've had, with all the rain and winds that we've had, we've probably cut 40 or 50 trees here in the last few weeks. So a lot of, a lot of stuff going on there. For the projects, we've got all the rock laid out for the chip seal, as you can see around town. So in the next week or so, they'll go around and sweep that up and then get that project finished. And today, we started calcium chloride, and that should be done tomorrow. That's all I have, unless anybody has any questions.
I have a quick question. I got a call from a resident in my neighborhood wanting to know about the speed sign on Furman Street.
Yep.
Which isn't there anymore.
Nope.
Your post is there, but the speed sign isn't there. Can you just give us a little update on that?
I can. I got a email from a resident a few weeks back, and he was talking about the speed and basically wanted more speed signs. And then I kind of had some back and forth with him a little bit on the signage and things like that. And I told him that I'd start with the process of getting Anoka County to put their sign out there. They literally took it down on Monday. So it was out for a week.
Okay.
Jack and I kind of looked at the study today. And without getting into a ton of detail, the 85th percentile speed of the traffic that was there is 50 miles an hour. So people are clearly going over the speed limit. But we haven't done much with that report. Jack kind of said that since you live on that road and you talked about it, that he would give you that, that report.
So have we had that, I mean, I know that you had put out the speeds, the speed sign on 140th and 144th and sent me the data on that. Is there other places in the city that were getting these requests, or is it only in my neck of the woods? And I'm not the one making the calls, by the way.
So your neck of the woods is clearly the highest call ratio, right?
Yeah.
The, the only other place in town that I've had somebody talk about is Laola. And the speed limit on that, don't quote me, is somewhere between 40 and 50 currently today. But that was part of that speed map that we talked about a couple of weeks ago. So that will be posted here in the next couple of weeks at 30. So just to go back to your area as well, after I had that complaint, I did talk to our deputies to patrol down there more. I don't know if you've seen more presence from the Sheriff's Department, but I did also talk to Jessica tonight to say to just.
Okay.
I got the information. The 85th percentile was 50, so 20 miles an hour over. Patrol it a little bit more. So she'll be talking to the deputies about that again.
I would say that's probably pretty accurate. I mean, Barb, you walk it all the time. What do you think?
There, I, there's nothing on there that showed 80. I think the highest I seen was 59. Do you remember?
I don't remember the exact speeds exactly, but of the almost 700 traffic count, there were 612 that were going higher than the 85th percentile.
So, so basically of all of the traffic, 85% of the people were traveling higher than the posted speed limit.
Yeah. Does that, does that sign capture the speed in both directions or just, just the one?
Just the direction. So it would just be the direction coming to the sign.
Okay.
I figured, I figured they're probably doing equally the other way, so. I posted it that way because the guy that called and complained, I put it in his yard. So that, that's why it was posted where it was posted. Anoka County? Waiting for it. Well, the biggie right now is we've talked to the Sheriff's Department to patrol more because it is posted, and 85% of the people are speeding, so they should generate some really good revenue down there.
Great. Well, I mean, I can tell you the speed traps that are set up in Centerville and Lionel Lakes work. Because I've been, you remember the slowdown there.
Everybody knows the slowdown there.
Yes, so sometimes those are good reminders.
He was the leading arrester in the state, the guy in Lionel Lakes.
Oh, really?
Yep, he wrote most tickets of anybody. It was his claim to fame.
So while we're on that subject, then, since Howard Lake has got redone and it's really nice, right? That's, I've noticed the uptick there. When I'm coming off Iverson in the morning, there's, there's at least two people that fly by at 60, 70. And I'll be an asshole and pull up in front of them, so they have to lock their brakes up. Because I don't.
We don't want to be, we don't want to be peeling you out of that deep ditch, Rob.
Well, and that's the other thing. How many people, there's been three people that went down in that ditch since it's been redone, so they're traveling it faster. Well, I, I think there's, there's people that speed everywhere. And the presence of the Sheriff's Department is as good as we can get. I mean, Howard Lake Drive has, I believe, somewhere between six and eight speed limit signs on it. Oh, yeah. It ain't, it isn't because of us putting the speed limit signs up. You know, people, I think you could put, you could put a speed limit sign every 15 feet, and people are going to drive what they're going to drive. So that's the, you know, that's just the nature of who we are.
We could put some speed bumps in.
I would not want to plow that road with.
Oh, that's right. That's right. That's right.
It has natural speed bumps to it.
It had them before, the micro-surfacing.
Okay, well, thank you. I appreciate the update.
Yep, that's all I have, then.
City Administrator Report. Jack?
The only thing I have is just to remind everyone that absentee balloting does start this Friday, and City Hall will be open on Friday afternoons for those people that want to come and vote early. The absentee balloting is reported early, too, runs right up to the day before the election. And City Hall will be open on Saturday before the county and state primary on August 13th for those people that need to come in on the weekend.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Number seven, Personnel Committee Report.
That would be, that would be me. So you have in your packet a report from the Personnel Committee on a candidate for the Planning Commission that we interviewed, and now I have to find my, have to find my report. How many places could it be?
It's, is it this one?
Yeah.
Do you want mine?
Just read yours. Yep. Somehow it got, it got buried in my cannabis licensing process pile. Anyway, so the planning, or the Personnel Committee, which is Councilmember Wagaman, myself, and City Administrator Jack Davis met on June 20th to interview a candidate who was interested in joining the Planning Commission. And we have him here in the audience, Scott Wendell. He can wave. So Mr. Wendell submitted his application at the end of May to serve on the Planning Commission. And he was interviewed to fill the vacancy that was created by Judy Hantash. If he is appointed tonight, his term will run through December 31st, 2025. Mr. Wendell has lived in Columbus since 2002 and has a long history of public service. He previously sat on the Columbus Public Works Advisory Board. Was that, were you in charge of that back then, Jim, 20, in the early 2000s?
Say that one more time.
The Public Work Advisory Board in the early 2000s?
I was not in charge of it. That would have been Jim Fraley.
Okay. Well, Mr. Wendell was on it back then. He's volunteered for various nonprofits. He's currently volunteers for the Ramsey County Business Advisory Board for Hazardous Waste Generators, and of course, he got extra bonus points because he routinely reads the minutes of the Planning Commission and the City Council to stay up to date on everything. Not only does he read it, he likes to read them, so. Mr. Wendell obtained his AA degree in law enforcement from the Minneapolis Community College and earned a BS in Ministry from University of Northwestern. He served as a licensed police officer for 22 years in Anoka and in St. Paul Police Departments. And then after retirement from law enforcement, serves in the position of Risk Safety Director and Manager with transportation, warehousing, and manufacturing companies. He's always had a civic-oriented mind and desires to see his town grow while improving the quality of life of his residents and views serving on the Planning Commission as an opportunity to follow that call and to serve the people of Columbus. He's very familiar with researching and interpreting statutes and city ordinances. And his prior police position was called upon to perform code enforcement. His retirement status and the flexibility in his current position affords him the ability to dedicate the time necessary to serve as a Planning Commissioner. So with that introduction, we are very pleased to recommend the appointment of Mr. Scott Wendell to the Planning Commission. We believe his professional and his volunteer experience and his desire to serve the community and his commitment to maintaining careful and planned growth in Columbus will be a valuable addition. Happy to answer any questions? Nope. So then I would make the motion to approve the appointment of Scott Wendell to fill the vacant Planning Commission seat of Judy Hantash with the term to expire on December 31st, 2025.
And this is Sue. I'll second.
Any questions, anyone? Call the vote.
Ron, aye.
Sue, aye.
Janet, aye.
Rob, aye.
Jesse, aye.
Congratulations. Is there anything you'd like to say?
Just thank you. I appreciate the opportunity to serve the citizens of Columbus and, of course, their elected officials, Mayor.
Well, thank you.
Thank you.
And right behind you is another Planning Commissioner, Barb. Have you met her? Yep. She's the veteran on the, on the board, so she'll be a great resource for you. And I don't mean veteran as military. I mean, like, she's weathered, she's weathered that position for what, five years, Barb? Yeah. Yep, great. Welcome, welcome aboard.
Letter E, announcements and reminders. Absentee voting starts June 28th. Workshop meeting July 2nd at 5:30. Planning Commission meeting July 3rd has been canceled. City Hall will be closed for Independence Day. City Council meeting on July 10th at 6:00. Park Board meeting the 16th at 5:30. Planning Commission meeting the 17th at 6:00. The City Council meeting on July 24th at 6:00 p.m. Is there anything else anyone would like to add before we go?
No, but Scott gets two weeks off.
But you know what? He gets to, he gets to be onboarded by the, by the expert on board is you and me, remember? You know how we onboard our Planning Commission?
Oh, yeah.
We'll be in touch.
Give them the big book and say good luck. So someone like to make the motion to adjourn?
I move to adjourn. This is Janet.
Second, Rob.
I'll call for the vote.
Ron, aye.
Sue, aye.
Janet, aye.
Rob, aye.
Jesse, aye. Our meeting is adjourned for tonight. Thank you, everyone.